Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting for September 25th, 2018. Public meeting will be, is being recorded and is available for viewing on the public access channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7:05. First item on the agenda, a public hearing continued. New England Realty Ventures LLC, application for an Aquafer Protection Special Permit and Site Plan Review's Permit, and Special Permit. And we'll consider the public hearing now open. Anybody have anything to present? Yeah, put them right there on that.
Good evening, members of the commission. For the record, Will Walter, professional engineer with Alfred Dinesh &amp; Company, representing the applicant. So this was presented before you, before. We've been working very closely with your town engineer, Mr. Kundip, as well as the third-party traffic engineer. So, just to refresh everybody's memory, North is up on this page. This is Main Street, Riddell Street over here, the fire station's right over here. So it's a vacant lot, and we're proposing to put a building right here, which will consist of a Dunkin' Donuts, and then some kind of convenience store that will share space with Dunkin' Donuts, and then there'll be about 1,500 square feet of office space. That'll go in the eastern portion of the property. So there's a couple of curb cuts, one coming off here off of Main Street, the other one up here off of Riddell. Both are going to be two-way. As part of the review with the traffic, we are proposing to widen Route 16 so that we can have a left turn only into here. And one other thing that came out of the coordination with the town engineer is, for tractor-trailers that come in, that were, we've got a flush, a portion of the curb right here with some gravel, so the tractor-trailers rather than having to make this difficult turn, and they could make it. You can imagine it could be a bit tight with the other traffic going on. They're going to be able to come back here and park over here, and then come in the building. We've got a dumpster pad back here. We've got some wayfinding signage from both directions directing folks to the drive-thru around here. We've got another thing that came out of the review process was, coming out of the doors back here, there's accessibility out to the loading space back here. As far as utilities, there's water, there's electric that's available. We coordinated with the, with the fire chief, and we're going to be putting in a hydrant right in front of the property, right down here. There's a septic system that's been designed on a preliminary basis. After we get our land use approvals and go to build it, we will, of course, go through that formal process with the sanitarium, have that designed. There was a little bit of work that we're going, it's hard to see off the page here, but we're going to be tightening up this intersection down here, move this utility pole out of, out of the intersection, which is going to be a benefit, obviously. Doing a little bit of re-grading down here, a little bit of drainer's work that is going to be required because of the changes that we're doing, so we're going to take care of the drainers down there. Part of the road widening over here, we're going to have to move this guardrail over a few feet, and put a very small retaining wall at the top of our, our new shelf, just to make sure we're not going to be going down into the wetlands. We're staying probably 15 or 20 or 25 feet away from those wells. Just moving it out enough to push the road out a little bit, four-foot shelf with our guardrail, and then a retaining wall that's probably going to be about 18 inches high. So, not much going on there. I mean, I've got a list of comments we have addressed with the town engineer. I could go through them, but...
Quite a few of them I read.
Yep, yeah, I mean, there were great comments from, from both the reviews, and feel like we've addressed them. So this time be more than happy to take any questions. One of the things that, that I think Mr. Kundip is going to ask us to do is to put a sidewalk along the front of our property, and we will, we'll be willing to do that as a condition. One other thing I'm also going to mention, too, is, it's, the property lines aren't shown on this, but the property line actually comes angles right up against the back of the road, right there, and it comes back out, and we're going to be deeding, I forget how many square feet it is, but it's in the package, we're going to be deeding that, a slice of this over to the town, so that in case the town in the future ever wants to put a sidewalk through here, I think we gave them six or seven feet, so that if you want to put a four-foot sidewalk or a five-foot sidewalk, you could do that. So that was something that I think the third-party reviewer picked up, and were more than willing to do that.
Where is the sidewalk going, exactly?
Well, one of the conditions is going to be a sidewalk in the right-of-way along our property, but one of the comments from the traffic engineer was, the property line came right up against the edge of the road, and so if the town ever wanted to construct a sidewalk in the future, they couldn't do it without an easement. So we're giving a slice of our property to the town to increase the width of the right-of-way, so that if you ever want to construct a sidewalk, you'll have the room to do it without having to take something.
So the sidewalk ends beyond the convenience store, right?
Yeah.
On the opposite side?
Yeah.
So the sidewalk is going to go...
In front of their...
Along 16, in front of their property.
In the future, if the town wants to develop a police station...
Well, as you, yeah, that's right. As you know, the town owns the next couple of parcels, and then past that, there is sidewalk going along Main Street, granted it's on the opposite side of the road. You know, it's really working with our, we do have a sidewalk plan, and this falls within our sidewalk plan as one of the important routes where we have interconnectivity, and especially when you have residents further towards the center of town that might have the desire to walk to this location and, you know, get some breakfast or whatever. I don't think that's unreasonable to request.
Is there a plan to connect that sidewalk to other sidewalks?
In the event...
In the near future?
Is there an imminent plan? There's nothing defined yet, but I'm sure if we move forward with a highway garage or relocate the police station, as both, both have been discussed, we likely would put something there.
I wish I would have known the timeframe that we're going to actually have a sidewalk there, because it's somewhat dangerous, I think, trying to put a sidewalk for people to come up, you're saying, from town?
No, I said from the center of town, from where the common is.
Okay.
Because there's no sidewalk the other way.
You gotta get across the street still.
He's going to walk from the...
Town common.
...gazebo down to there.
Yes.
Right.
Down to the convenience store.
Aside from the reasons I mentioned, I also think it's good practice that when we have a development like this, that we have that as part of, you know, our review.
Are you okay with our, all our responses to your questions?
Oh, the other questions? Yes, I really have only two comments at this point, and I also want our traffic consultant to answer any questions, so, so I know traffic was a big concern, so our consultant is here if you have specific questions related to traffic. But with regard to the world of other questions, Will has addressed everything, with the exception, I had a comment on the outlet for the stormwater pond, which, you know, the differential in elevation is pretty insignificant between the outlet and the inlet catch basin, so I asked that they lower the outlet by six inches, and that's something they can do, and, you know, I think that'll give us enough room to have some freeboard above the outlet where, you know, we're not going to queue into the roadway.
Yeah.
Is this the GPI number A, letter A, about the new catch basin should be installed?
No, that's down, that's down the corner down here.
Has that, have you read this?
I have, yeah.
Dated September 25th?
I have, yep.
Okay, and you're prepared to...
We have no problem with that.
Except those...
Yep, I think what you're talking about is, Jim, on the northeast corner down here, another, is there a low point in that northeast corner intersection, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I'm Jim Noes from Greenman Peterson, for the record. Yeah, just prior to going in the intersection, the runoff on Main Street's going to the west, so now the catch basin right before the intersection, so all that runoff doesn't cross the intersection. There is the, the low point's on the other side of the road, but you don't want that water crossing.
So on their property?
Oh, no, it's on the road. Off the property, in the road, yeah.
You're agreeable to that?
Absolutely.
I have just two things. I know you have trees right there by the entrance, exit there on 16.
Right at the end.
No, yeah, right there. See where your line is for your stop, for the vehicles to stop exiting?
Right here?
Right there.
This way?
That tree right there, and the tree's right on the other side. It's going to become an issue for people to try to look each way. That's right around where they're going to be.
Yeah, pull the tree back.
You can pull those trees back.
Or push them back, or maybe...
Relocate them to another spot, in the back.
Yeah, or maybe the two right there by the entrance, remove those, and maybe have one or two others, but if you're parked at that white line, you're not going to see through those trees.
Yeah, that is a concern. We can actually check with Jennifer Conley from WSP. We can double-check and see how big those trees are going to grow. Now, if they're a type of tree that's only going to grow to a nominal size, it isn't a problem, obviously. If it's one of those trees that grows to be, you know...
Right, but I'm saying normally, a lot of times with the trees, you kind of keep them...
While they're growing.
Yeah, we can pull back, that's fine.
Either pull back or eliminate, or, I mean, you know how we think on that stuff.
Was there, was there a requirement to put trees in?
I'm okay with eliminating those two.
There is in the, in the site plan, regulations that there is a...
But I have no problem with eliminating those two trees.
Yeah, I mean, just...
We already spoke about in the...
Do you want to pull back?
Relocating the sightlines.
Right, move it in towards the problem.
They did technically meet the site distance requirements. Based on our traffic consultant's review, they met the requirement per ASHTO standards for site distance.
With those trees there?
At that location, yeah, with, with the trees there.
Yeah.
I don't like trees.
They also relocated these entrance sign for that reason.
But certainly, if it's something important...
I can even pull back five, six feet, too.
Yeah, I mean, you're looking for, it's a blind spot. I mean, we all know it.
That's fine.
Anytime you have trees right around that intersection, you might look, find them pretty on the drawing, but in the real world, you're looking for trouble.
So is the direction to eliminate them, or just move them back five, six feet?
I'd say, I'd say the two by the entrance eliminate, then the other ones move back a bit.
These two right here?
Yeah.
These will not be, there's no way that you're going to...
Because you have...
Eyes right there, it's not even going to be close.
And I would feel the same way about the second tree on the other side, but I agree with you, the concern about that.
Yeah, so, we'll just eliminate those then?
Those two.
Well, it's up to the board. You want to eliminate them, you want them to pull them back.
I'd say eliminate them, because you know, it's going to be trouble down the road.
There's a requirement, yes.
The site plan review, is there a requirement for number of trees, or...
Yeah, it's the spacing and the frequency of a tree.
Okay, so they can come up with another spot, right?
Yeah, that's a message.
Take the two trees, put them somewhere else.
We can either push them back or eliminate them.
And I don't know what type of trees you're proposing, but Mike was right about the, there's a septic there, so I don't know how you're going to be planting them.
How about between, take those two and put them between the tractor-trailer lane and, and the parking spot?
What, the undeveloped area?
Yeah, so the tractor-trailers can smash into those branches.
Listen, to eliminate two trees...
Guarantee you, these are going to be smaller trees.
To eliminate two trees is not going to be a big deal.
It's not going to be a big deal.
To eliminate two trees.
They look big on the plan.
I don't see if you pull them back or eliminate them.
I say to eliminate.
Okay.
That's my...
They would have to ask for a waiver?
Yeah.
Just relocate them.
Well, they're not, they're not asking for a waiver.
No waiver, we're requesting that they get relocated.
Relocate, that's fine. All right, Mike, you have a second question?
We know you hate trees.
Yeah, intersections, yes. On page, and this is kind of trivial, details on the trenches, water trench, electric trench, smoke trench, no marking for electrical warning tape on the middle trench.
What page do you want, Mike?
Where the trenches?
What's the number?
It's a generic detail.
C-64.
C-64.
Yeah, we'll add that.
I would hope the electrical instructor would make sure it's on that.
Yeah, I would, too. Everyone's have it.
What was that? C-64.
Detail number two, needs electrical, safety tape.
Warning tape.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mike?
No?
Okay. Anybody else on the board have a question?
Good question. Since there's like limited handicap accessibility space for office space, does this site still have room to expand, if possible? Like, if you guys came back in five years and said, hey, we need to add 3,000 square feet?
It would have to, we, the site would have to be modified, for sure.
But there is plenty of room out this way. Okay, that's all.
Now, that being said, they would probably trigger again the Water Resource Protection Overlay District, and they'd need a special permit under that, so in addition to site plan review.
And did you file with conservation for the work within the roadway expanding?
Have we done that?
No, not that I'm aware of.
Are you planning to?
Have you filed with CONCOM yet?
No. No order of this report first.
Yes. I just want for your convenience and knowledge, and I'll put a condition in the decision, but we do have a bylaw that has a threshold for earth removal. I'm looking at the size of the ponds. You can certainly lose the material on-site, but I know, just looking at the topo, it looks like it's a cut site anyway. 300 cubic yards are more removed from a site within 12 months, requires an earth removal permit.
Okay.
Okay, but certainly stockpile it on-site.
Do we have to go through this board?
Yes.
To do that?
We do it all. Take care of it all.
Did you, did you have a calculation?
I do not, I do not have a calculation.
Stockpile it on...
You could certainly stockpile it on-site, and that's within the scope, that you're, you're complying with the bylaw.
I'm going to make that.
You're going to put that in the...
I'll put that in, yeah, just reference it, yeah.
Bill, any comments?
No, I'd ask that Jim just talk briefly about traffic, since we had him do a review, so, so that people can understand the scope of what he did and what he looked at, and I'll have a few comments at the end, but that's it.
Yeah, I won't take too much of your time, but we did spend quite a bit of time looking at the traffic studies, not only the last...
Can you just give your name for the...
I'm, I'm sorry, Jim Noes again, from Greenman Peterson, Inc. We did spend a bit of time looking at the traffic material that's been submitted over the past three years, not just the recent submittal, but also there was the one done in, and I don't want to get the dates wrong, so I'll look at my notes here. There was one done in March 2015, and there was a supplemental memo last year, March 2017, and the latest one in July 18. We did look at everything, you know, for what was submitted, it did conform to the standards, the trip generation that they had performed, that the study area that they had looked at. We did have some comments that because they were done over a period of three years, and what we've tried to do, and what we do as, most engineers do, is try to conform to, you know, industry standards. So there was some material missing there that, you know, we wish we had had, you know, projections out normally, and what the industry standards, or at least in the state, is they follow MAST DOT's traffic engineering guidelines, so you want to look at existing conditions, you know, and then you want to project it out a few years, seven years, and they didn't do that. And there was a couple of other things that weren't done, you know, at the last submittal, and then we commented on it in the September 25th letter. But pretty much, you know, even if with that material, I don't think our conclusions would have changed significantly. The mitigation measures that they've offered here at this, you know, both the intersection and the left-turn lane mitigate the, the traffic that'll be coming out of the site. I know we were talking about the, the intersection site distance again, and it's, if you go out there right now, and I was out to Riddell Road earlier, and it's kind of, you know, you see the vegetation off to your left, but, you know, and again, a lot of people look at that and go, and like, you know, how are you going to do it? But that's all going to be cut down. One of the conditions, and I don't know how that works, but, you know, you know, keep the vegetation, or, I'm sure they're going to be mowing out to the street line, but, but since that is actually town right-of-way, that, you know, they don't, you know, they're not required to do it, but there may be a condition that, you know, the entire front of the site, because it is a big front lawn, you know?
That's a good point.
So doing that, rather than having those grasses grow up and looking at that. The other issue I know that was out there was solar glare in, you know, the left-turn lane. There's not much anybody could do about the solar glare, but the left-turn lane does help by getting that left-turning traffic out of there in the morning, morning peak hours, and helping that condition, too, so. Yeah, all in all, I mean, we did have a couple more comments in the intersection site plan, but the applicant will, we need to be doing construction-level drawings for anything out on the roadway in the intersection, and those issues can be addressed down the line at that point.
I would think this, since they've agreed to a sidewalk in the front, that would probably eliminate a lot of that grass that's going to grow up anyway.
Yeah.
It's going to be like a strip like this.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I don't know how, you know, it'd be nice to, you know, probably have a grass strip in between, and I don't know if that would...
Yeah, a grass strip, but it wouldn't be like it is now with, with the hay.
Yeah, but yeah, if the entire site out to the street line is maintained, that's, that's so that we don't have a...
I can walk over from the garage and weed whack it anyway.
No. On the sidewalk?
Eighty-nine years old, retired. Any questions for Jim?
No.
What, what's your feeling on the amount of queuing of vehicles that would be within the site and outside the site if necessary? You know, you see some of these where the vehicles, like Plumbers Corner, you know, are queuing out onto the road.
Yeah, yeah.
And impeding traffic in the travel lane.
Yeah, this one, and actually, we talked about that, having the truck bypass route. The drive-throughs has capacity, I think, 14 cars backed up in it. I counted it earlier, 14 would bring it out to this point.
Yeah.
14 is pretty much the maximum that we've seen in a lot of the drive-throughs that even we've been asked to do. And like I said, that's, that brings it out to here, and then you could, you know, you don't want it to, but it could sneak out, but there's, there's a lot of queuing in there, that, that shouldn't be a problem. But one of the problems, you know, one of the problems prior without this was if the truck wanted to get there, they were stuck in the queue. And so this is a great idea, is to have the bypass through there for the trucks.
I have a question. So you have the tractor, the trailer loading, must be the two spots up top, for them to park? If they're parked there, and then you've got backup loading to your drive-up, there's also another lane for people to get by who are not going to be in that line?
Yeah, there's room between the drive-through.
That's what I'm...
Essentially, essentially, we have two spaces back here, and one can be used for, for loading, you know, bringing the supplies in.
Right.
But they both could also be used for tractor-trailer, and there's the drive-through, this is 24 feet, so the drive-through would be 12, then there's a bypass lane, then there's the loading and the tractor.
Yeah, that should be enough.
Oh, yeah.
Just making sure we don't get into a cluster, you know, so...
It's one of them, some of the town roads.
Correct.
Yeah. I know, I know what we're talking about, yeah.
No, it's good, like I said, Mike, deal was the trees out there by the...
Look, yeah?
It's good.
Excellent. At the intersection of Riddell, we're going to have signage there for, so people aren't coming from all directions now, is there going to be distinguished lanes for a right turn, left turn?
There will be, I think in concept, we're looking at what's proposed in concept. They will at some point have to go to the road commissioners to get their approval for the work within the public way. That's when we'll have some level of detail on the drawings, and I think that falls within their scope, and the highway superintendent and I will take a look at what they're proposing at that point.
Very good. It'll be more of a T-intersection.
It'll be a T-intersection. It'll have three lanes, one for right-hand turns as you're leaving Riddell, one for left-hand turns, actually...
Right. And one for in.
And one for in, yeah.
Yeah. Works with the wild west, what it is today.
It's that way now.
It's a lot of whips now.
Yeah, but you don't, you could go right or left on the pole.
Exactly. I know, on either side, yeah.
Correct. Does anybody know if there's a overhead streetlight on that pole?
Oh, I don't think there is.
I don't think there is. Nope, it's a straight-up pole.
Just a pole?
Yeah. I don't remember there being a streetlight, yeah.
What you're saying on the streetlight, on the new pole?
Oh, I think apples and apples, if, if one's not there, I would not propose one. If one was there, that, I had to think of other things.
Yeah.
Because we're in the process of redoing our streetlights.
All right, anybody else on the board have any questions?
No requested waivers?
No.
So will, can be conditioning?
We did, Will and I had a discussion today on the Water Resource Protection Overlay bylaw, which, there's some confusion in there, but we both think it's safest to still go forward with that permit. They comply with the aspects of the permit, so...
As far as, is this part of triggering it?
As it triggering it, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're good on both permits right now, the Aquafer?
All three, yeah.
All three, there's actually four permits. You have a sign permit?
Yep.
Okay, I don't know if you want to show us a picture of the sign?
I do.
If you guys are comfortable with that.
Yep.
So that falls within your jurisdiction because they're here for site plan review?
So the sign is going to go right down there, just definitely set back from the sightlines.
Yeah.
And here's a, here's a, as you're on Main Street looking, if you're at this, this is Dunkin' Donuts sign, then there's going to be whatever, convenience store, and then whatever, office. And then this is what the sign is going to be, it's 15 feet high, about nine, nine and three-quarter, you know, nine and a quarter feet that way, and a little less than four and a half that way.
That's right.
It's going to say Dunkin' now.
Yeah. I'm ready on the way over.
Just Dunkin', yeah.
White out.
Yeah.
So you have the sign permit?
You have the sign bylaw, you have Water Resource Protection Overlay District, you have site plan review, and you have just a special permit for the drive-through, so...
This was all under one public hearing?
Correct.
Yes. Can I ask, is there the central, that double door in the front, is that the entrance that also gets you into the Dunkin' Donuts from Pedestrian?
Yes, that's correct, yeah.
So is that going to be set up, mirror images across the street, sort of convenience store with the Dunkin' Donuts, pretty much?
This is how, this is how they designed it.
No, I'm not, I'm just asking the question, I'm not debating the way the other...
This is what it's going to look like.
No, no, but it's not a Dunkin' Donuts that you go into like over at Mendon?
Separate, it's not a separate...
He's from Connecticut.
No, no, this is, I'm a Mass P, I'm a Mass P, but this is, it's all going to be one area when you walk in, you know, you've got the convenience store with the different things they're selling.
There's a floor plan in there.
Yeah, there's a floor plan, and then you walk over the counter, and there's some seats for the Dunkin' Donuts.
I thought it was going to be a separate stand.
Michael, open, constant.
He's just trying to figure out, he's getting out his store.
You don't want to get lost.
I don't know, we have lots of choices of convenience stores, and liquor stores, and pizzas, you know, we've got all...
You gotta go to the long door.
They don't want a cafe.
They're coming, they're gonna do it right in here.
Okay, everybody, I'll say.
We're good.
I'll make a move.
And we just have some conditions.
The conditions I have so far, catch basin at Rydell Road intersection, trees at exit location to be relocated, detail C on sheet C at six point four, detail two electric warning tape, I'm gonna reference the earth removal by law, sidewalk along Main Street, lower outlet in pond by six inches, entire frontage of site mowed and maintained, work in town right-of-way will require going to the road commissioners, and then I have earth removal by law twice. Concom. Okay.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Well, no, no, no. Public hearing, anybody in the audience have any questions? Seeing none, I can move forward.
Okay, my motion stands, second stand.
Motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike Z. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Abstain? One abstention from less. All right, motion carries.
Go ahead, Tracy.
I'll make a motion to, do you wanna say anything? I'll make a motion to grant the aquifer protection special permit, site plan review permit with sign permit and special permit for the earth, what?
Drive-through. They didn't file for earth removal.
The what?
Drive-through.
The drive-through.
Second.
With, with conditions.
With the conditions as previously stated.
Second. Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by the other Mike. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Abstain.
Abstain, check for less. All right.
Thank you very much.
Forgot already.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with it, man.
Thanks, Will.
I think so.
That's Larry's problem.
Minor. No, it's just stockpile. Funny, early put it out there and you can get rid of it.
And then board of health has a set date.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, the big thing was.
Can't wait.
Walk downtown.
Wait a second, is theirs upstairs?
Sidewalks.
They're putting office upstairs?
No, no, next to it.
Yeah, but is there any office space upstairs?
No.
No, no, second floor, it's already great.
Find another spot and dump it, it's accessible.
It is, you're right, the way, the way the sidewalks are left, it's a super majority.
You needed five. We're good.
The budget is always gonna be important.
Yeah, I just, I just someone asked.
Right.
It came up about.
Ready, boy?
What?
Okay, discussion, CMRPC scope of zoning map amendments in conflicting zones.
Actually, a plan you can see?
Watch the drinks.
We got two, I'll flip one over, so everybody's oriented correctly. Okay, so.
Oh, jeez.
What we were looking at.
Spilled a word right between.
This is just a working draft.
Came right off. That's when.
Spilt.
Bring it down this way a little bit, so. Kenny.
So, as you know, the board had requested that we talk to CMRPC about working with us using the hours that we get for our membership with CMRPC and have them take a look at our zoning map to identify areas on the zoning within the different zoning districts that might be of interest to have the zone line match the property line. So from my perspective, I think the important areas are the ones where you have significant differences in what the zoning districts are, so for example, residential to industrial. So those are very different, maybe you wanna align the zoning district boundary with the property boundary as opposed to crossing across a property, so one property has two different zoning districts. So what CMRPC did was they looked at the world of those issues and the list was super long, so they pared it down and installed some parameters and identified in the red-shaded areas, the areas that they had those conflicts that were on larger pieces of property and that were of significant difference in use.
Are those actual overlaps in the sense of?
Yeah, all the striped ones.
The striped ones are properties that contain two different zoning districts. So it's one property that contains two zoning districts.
It looks like there are a lot of parcels here that have two.
Well, I'm a kind of striped ones.
Yeah, and that, that's what they were trying to illustrate, so they didn't get into the smaller parcels, these are the larger sized parcels with significant differences between the zoning districts. So they're looking for guidance and input from us at this point. Where do we wanna go with this? Do we wanna rank a handful? Do we wanna focus on one at a time? How do we wanna execute what they've prepared, so I can give them some direction and feedback from the board?
Go, go west in, work your way from the industrial area here, because these ones here, work your way into the center.
I would suggest that we wanna focus on the eastern side of town, because the western doesn't have infrastructure utilities.
This is the area, if anything's gonna happen, it's gonna happen up on forty-sixth, before it happens up here in Webster.
Correct.
So anything that we discuss, even with like pine and the earth removal and all that going on, it's all gonna be on that side. Granted, this is important too, but I think on this side is the most important, that's my opinion.
I, I just, I agree with you.
Okay.
Do we, do we have a list of owners that are affected by this?
We did, we did, it was emailed out. I'm not sure if Maria copied it in your packets.
Yes, this is it.
Because I figured some of this might be the state already owned.
Yeah, just different departments, could be.
Lot of rural agriculture right next to industrial. Which is fine, I mean, that happens, you drive anywhere in the state of Mass, that's what you see. There's, there's a line, no matter how you slice it or dice it, there's gonna be a line.
Now, the thing that you don't get out of this map is if there's a geographic boundary that might make sense with the limitation on the zoning district boundary, so if there's like, for example, a wetland body that bisects a property, you know, that's not shown here.
Right, okay.
This eliminates those arrows. This eliminates those arrows that says like four hundred feet from this line to this line.
It might, it might change some of that.
Doesn't make any sense.
Well, it goes like this, right? And all these, this stuff was already, this North Street was already established, so this was already there, that white, right?
Yeah, but there's only two lots there, and that's all, that lot. That lot's, that lot, this is all one lot.
They emailed it.
Yeah, that's all.
Oh, but I mean, this is.
See what I'm saying? You see it?
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah, I don't like.
So specifically how you think we should handle it?
So.
We're gonna start at the east end of town.
Yeah, I'd say we start at the one forty-sixth, yes.
I would say limit your, your identification to a handful.
Yes.
Of critical properties that you think are important.
Right.
And then we'll take that and pursue that further with CMRPC, so the vast majority of what they show on this map won't be addressed. It might be a handful in critical areas.
I'm in agreement with that, I think residential and industrial is two different worlds and that's the one that should be addressed.
There's gonna be a process, so we might all agree that, you know, one of these particular parcels we recommend be changed, we then call in the landowner, so they're not in the dark.
Oh, yeah.
And then they say, no way, I like it that way.
Well, that was my question.
Right, that is not worth wasting that time.
Correct.
Well, then we just show it.
And then the other thing is, these previously developed properties that are already being used in a rural agricultural as industrial or whatever.
North Brown, right now, is, is in industrial?
Or, you know, somebody, I know we had some ZBA stuff on Route sixteen, that the person's already has a house there and they're going to ZBA for addition, right?
And I think to Bill's point, I think you wanna almost make the parcel match up with the zoning for the area.
There's exist, yeah, and what's existing.
The issue with the, the North Village is that's a forty B project and they basically don't have to comply with local zoning.
Correct, correct, but they're, they're industrial, I'm just saying that's another one.
And that's wrong, in my opinion.
That's, that's state law.
Yeah, I know, but it's wrong.
That's what you're gonna get with clusters, cluster developments. But you also think, if you take that also back from industrial, it's never gonna be industrial land, so don't say, oh, we've got a hundred acres of industrial land.
People have houses there.
Yeah.
And then they stick that in the middle of it. That, that's why I asked, look at it, because it's a mess, it really is, when it really is.
Look at this map.
Yeah.
Nobody's disputing that.
I knew it was a mess.
But we're in the mess, it's, it's, logistically, I don't know how you easily get out of the mess.
Every homeowner agrees, that's how you get out of the mess, and that's not gonna happen, so.
Right, so what do we do? Do you want us to look to pick?
We've gotta hone down the scope, because right now it's too broad.
No, that's, no, that's. That's the goal.
Okay, so we'll just do like, here, over, this part right here. Okay, because we wanna make some money, right?
The northeast quadrant.
We wanna make some money, so let's get some industry, industrial zone stuff.
On this side.
And see if everybody's.
Mike, that's, that's downtown, that's down by, where pine sand and gravel is. Was Route sixteen?
Davis Street, right? Davis is sixteen.
Hotbed Avenue, sixteen.
But this is Uxbridge over there, isn't it?
Right, but I mean, that's.
Route sixteen's on Hotbed Avenue.
It's so, very, very faint, I would've thought that big bowl.
Hotbed Avenue was not Route sixteen, northeast Main Street is Route, is not Hotbed Avenue.
No, Route sixteen's right here.
Was sixteen.
Which residential, right there.
And then moves it around.
And it becomes Davis, yeah.
Right, so down along there. So that's what we're saying, I'd say from where it says village business, east. Agree? Agree?
Everybody agree with that?
Say that again?
We're village business here, agree?
Here, I'm serious, use that.
All right, all right.
Right, right on it.
Want to draw a line?
You're sure?
Yeah, to start with.
Start with.
Do you wanna get this one too?
Yeah, might as well.
Because that, that could be easily changed.
You can make it crooked, yeah, there you go.
There you go, start with that.
Okay, I still think that's a lot of properties.
Like at the bottoms though?
But a lot of it.
Well, this was the bottom that was trying to get rezoned, remember the railroad thing? That slice right there?
Yep, yep, that's fair.
There again, it is a little bit of contact and say, try to say, no, you don't wanna do nothing, okay, then it better be gone.
What is this over here? What is the difference over here? This is, this is industrial, the red, right?
The industri, no, that's commercial.
So you wanna go here?
Industrial is gray, Ernie.
The gray?
Just like the budding towns.
North, for North Street and then.
Down in Davis, or down on the backside of the.
So the thought is like this rural agricultural should become industrial or be consistent with what this.
Right?
Correct. In my opinion.
What's white here?
Now, that's a good one to talk about, is this one right on, right south of northeast?
We're including that, we're definitely including that.
Definitely including that, because to me, yes, exactly. The problem is Uxbridge zoning might be residential, the idea would be you'd use access to an industrial area off of Hartford Ave, but this part's residential.
Right, there's no reason this rural agricultural here should go industrial.
Will's saying it's still too much.
It's funny, a little white pocket.
What's the white?
I mean, I don't mind taking, taking all of that and trying to quantify that. You know, because I'm looking at it and some of these are school properties, so town-owned properties, those will fall off the list.
Right, they'll all drop off.
So, can I ask a question? So this crosshatch is on land that's undeveloped at this point.
Correct, that's woods.
Whereas white here is still rural agricultural, but we're not touching it, crosshatch, because there's already something in there.
Right, and you bring up a good point, Aaron, maybe we want to rezone that whole square, I don't know. You know, not just that parcel.
It shouldn't be cut up like this, this is, this is just bad.
It's messy, it's messy.
Do you think that's a good section?
Yeah, that's a good start.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, you say the.
And then next meeting, you know.
You might say, hey, we need to refine it.
What I'll try to do is have a paired, a prioritization on those parcels.
Can this get blown up that we can look at it, or does it not help? Does it help to have it blown up more?
Sure, yeah, we could probably even put some of the info on the map, so you can see owner's name and stuff like that.
I mean, I think that's, if we can get this to be this size, that's awesome.
Yeah.
I mean.
So we'll do that for next meeting.
That's awesome.
No, I appreciate it.
Good work, good work, yeah.
These are all the big, big parcels. It's like, the town, well, doesn't really have a support for it and don't still park right, like that doesn't.
Does anybody wanna take one of these two maps?
That's one we run, so.
Yep, that's why I'm grabbing it.
Giving those away.
Yes.
Newspaper piece, next thing on the.
Yeah, we had a chart at the last meeting, I just wanna put that thing to rest, can we kinda either say we're good with what we're doing or make a change?
There you go, me too, they're good.
Everybody, we're good?
Everybody agree with that? You agree with that?
No, but that's okay.
He brought it out, he.
Yeah, you guys waited, I went on last meeting, too.
Yes.
You need this back, Bill?
You want it?
Yeah.
You can.
Cheers.
I wanna take it somewhere where I can actually see. In front of the throw.
And if I get that next map, I'll email it out before the next meeting, I'll, just so you know.
Thank you.
Anybody find that useful, the table on England Realty that I emailed out, did anybody even look at that? Was that helpful? The webpage where you click on stuff? No, I won't spend the time doing it if nobody.
I mean, I'm, I, you don't.
Well, yeah.
There are people that are using it, if you, if it's not a lot of time, email it.
Well, it's helpful to me, too, just for management.
If it's helpful to you, then go ahead and do it.
Like I always see Maria's post on the meeting, I'll be a quick peek at it and then if I get back on the phone sometimes.
All right, subdivision regulations.
Okay, in your packet, Les was kind enough to give us some comments on the rules and regs, so what I did was I only took the page where he had a comment, and if you look at each page, you'll see the blocked out comment, and then you'll see a little like thought bubble near where the comment applies.
Oh, you did have your comment in, huh?
No.
Cool. It's been, it's been ten years or so, looks like we, previous revisions were ninety-eight and two thousand nine, so we're probably due to update these, probably update them every ten years like Master.
Seventy-five.
Yeah.
Oh, then revised two thousand nine.
They weren't updated at all. Twenty-three years later than they updated them.
So, do you wanna go through them, or do you want me to?
Good, I'm off.
Okay, so on page ten, the question was, do we need twenty-two copies, which is what stipulated, and we actually have conflicting things between the regs and what Maria hands out as an instruction sheet, but twenty-two copies is what we historically requested, and I, I agree with the comment that we should break down how many per department, but I think ultimately what we're looking at are maybe eight reduced size, two, let's start, two full-size sets, because two full-size sets are what I use, one for record copy in the file and one I can mark up. Eight reduced size, so each of you get a copy and then we have a reduced size for the file, and then an electronic copy, and we send the electronic copy out to all the departments for review and feedback.
That's all you need.
Page ten, it starts on page ten, I believe. This is the first page.
First page is page ten.
We might have to order the pages correctly, too.
Are they wrong?
Yeah, we start on page ten.
What's this, thirteen?
Yeah.
Right, and then it's- That's in the PDF. Twenty-two.
No.
Eight reduced, eight reduced copies.
No, he just printed the ones that you had notes on.
Yeah.
Okay, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, I didn't do the whole set.
We had, we had some quirkiness with this.
Okay, next one?
Uh, page thirteen, um, should we just list license P here, remove Lanceler? No. Subdivisions are primarily about property lines and only PLSs can do that.
Established.
Much to my dismay.
We're good with that.
Okay.
They have good lobbyists.
Down at the, down at the bottom, uh, could we reduce the abutters list of properties directly abutting the project? Three hundred feet is a bit much.
Is there statutes on that?
There are, yes. That's, that's state law.
Yeah.
Okay, um, page nineteen, should RCP, should say RCP in the first line? That's fine, I agree with that. We'll put in RCP. No objection for that. Does Bald, this is an example, I believe, um, so the, the residential compounds say that must create at least two but not more than ten lots and have a minimum of a hundred feet of frontage on an existing public way. And the question is, does Bald Hill Road meet this requirement for minimum frontage? Bald Hill Road was not a residential compound, that was a private way. In fact, when that came through as an A and R years ago, they showed the right-of-way as an easement across the abutting properties which go to the center of Bald Hill Road. I always say Bald Hill Farm Road for somebody.
Reduced frontage law.
Twenty-two.
I can't remember what that one was.
This had to do with our discussion at the last meeting where we had a paved apron on the residential-
That's what I kind of thought, down on the bottom, forty feet. I can say, if that's what we-
Protecting the public way.
We have so many washouts in the town.
Not, not, not just the-
Protecting the public.
It's twenty feet wide and forty feet long?
Yeah, twenty feet is-
You okay with that? I thought you were saying like eighteen or something like that.
No, 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 I like wider, I like wider better than narrow. At least twenty.
And I think you're splitting hairs if you're going from eighteen to twenty.
True, true.
No, no. The twenty by forty. Yeah.
Forty, you okay with?
Yeah.
Your roads get beat up, Ernie.
Good.
All this gravel washes out and sand on these roads.
Yeah, right, no, you got it, yeah.
And it's dangerous too. People slip on it.
Yeah.
Do we want to say streets and roadways here, section five point one? I don't have a problem with that.
Do we have a definition of roadway?
Right, that's good, huh?
So when we're looking at definitions, you must, we must have a street-
Do we even have a definition section? I don't even think, I don't-
What's the difference between a street and roadway?
I will-
Under-
I'll check that.
General bylaws, but, but you have definitions?
I will check that, but I don't know that the general bylaws definitions would apply for our regulations.
Okay, then this should have definitions.
So we want to talk about definition section? Okay, I'll see what I can come up on that.
Cause it should just be streets and then the definition of streets. Yes, it is. Um, and streets could be defined as a roadway, blah, blah, blah.
Right, and then there should be, you know, under that, including terraces, avenues, you know, I mean, the whole place, you know, there's a whole bunch of words of different types of-
Yeah, 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 well, it's a way describing a way.
Corn. You know, and you park on a, what about a point? Park in a driveway, you're driving a parkway.
Okay, the next one.
This is diverse.
This is a big one.
Alright, uh, other communities have a minimum right-of-way of forty or fifty feet. The town only maintains twenty to twenty-four feet with the pavement. Sixty feet is mainly for industrial areas. That goes to the width of the right-of-way, where we changed, as you might recall a few years back, from fifty up to sixty. And the logic was, you know, we were having, we were struggling, and in fact, applicants were coming in with justification for their waiver requests, that the right-of-way width of fifty feet was not adequate to fit all the stuff we wanted in our regs. So between the sidewalks on both sides, the street trees, the grass strips, five feet on both sides.
But, but we-
And that also leaves no room for utilities outside of, underneath the pavement, which is not necessarily a bad thing. You know.
They can ask for waiver, right?
They can ask for waiver, of course, to any one of these areas.
Leave it there and then it'll be a waiver. I mean, that's-
Like we just did on the one part, that we allow a small deviation in that for a section of roadway.
Right, because we eliminated also, we also eliminated the sidewalks on both sides, in a lot of areas, and the trees. Not really doing trees.
Well, we love.
Well, it's a require, it's a require, it's a requirement our regs to have sidewalk on both sides.
It's a waiver.
It's a waiver.
It's a waiver.
But then we want to kind of get away from always wavering?
No.
It's easy to, it's easy for them to submit.
Waivers are an opportunity for us to work with a developer to get something that we want too. So if we say we want sidewalks on both sides and they come in and ask for a waiver, we can get, it's a way of negotiating with them. I have no problem with asking for-
I have no problem with that.
Or two, or waving for one.
Yeah, well, I think that's board, yeah, that's board.
It's much easier to have just a waiver put in or ask for a waiver than it is for us to request them to do something.
Correct.
It's easier to have it eliminated than it is to add it.
Yeah.
So, all it is is a sentence. Request waiver for, blah, blah, blah.
Yeah.
Done. If not?
Then all of this is-
Paul is engineer.
Yeah, hold on.
It's a negotiating.
Done.
So, so, we're good?
We're good. I'm good with it. I'm not for changing any of that.
In, in area, local towns, I'm not going to braid them a lot, like when they do a development, how wide do they make their roads? I'm starting to see wider roads put in for easier and less congestion. Is, anybody?
Paved with?
Yeah, paved with. Paved with? Yeah, any idea what, what kind of is going on out there? Like, I don't know about you-
Twenty-four is pretty much the standard that I see, unless it's, it's an arterial, but then we probably wouldn't see that as a subdivision road.
Right.
It would be, um, you know, more regionally based.
What's the size, you said?
Twenty-four is typically what you'll see in any town.
You're talking about pay, 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 curb to curb. Curb, curb to curb, twenty-four?
On a conventional subdivision, okay, so you might get some alternatives for like, uh, low-impact development, like, the forty P is a low-impact development.
Yeah.
And I encourage you to take a ride up around those roads, okay? So you get a feel for what that's, that's like.
Cause I, I know in some areas, I've been, the roadway seem like they're making them wider, you know, more, um, they're just making them wider, more spacious area than, you know, you have a lawn and houses. But the roadway itself is a more of an open area to get in and around than a little twenty-four feet. Especially out, start heading east.
Upscale subdivisions.
South shore, so developments being built, the roadways and the developments are much wider than a little twenty-four-foot wide road.
It allows, you know, some of them have the California curbs and such like that, and so what happens, you get the postal, postal guys on the side of the road and a bike on the left and the carts can still get by, you know.
Things of that nature and stuff, yeah. And with the trees. I know it's something to think about or, uh, maybe another time or-
I think it's full fops sometimes, because you see, like, north edges, just a bunch of subdivisions and they're pretty, probably eighteen or something like that.
Which is too, 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 too narrow.
Yeah, we're also looking for less increase in impervious too, and now you're adding to the roadway.
That's very tight, eighteen feet.
Eighteen? I wouldn't go any, I wouldn't go any less than twenty-four.
For a subdivision?
No way, no way.
It's fine for a private way, like, we have these residential compounds and they're responsible to maintain it.
They're maintenance, not ours.
Okay. Turning radius?
We'll leave it at twenty, twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty-five feet, twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Twenty-five. Yeah, that's right.
Yeah.
Turning radius, I did not check with the fire chief. I can do that. Did you, Les?
No, I didn't. I just, I just knew we had someone coming with the, uh,
Yeah, I didn't see that on the page.
Turning on their private way, what the radius was for that, to be more aligned with the, the radius of the vehicles and some of that, so. Just because we haven't updated these in ten years, so.
Page twenty-seven, why twenty-one days a week? That's three weeks. I couldn't agree more. Okay, so, so, I have issues with the whole section. When we redid these, I really didn't contribute a lot of my personal opinions. I just took the old regs and put them in a more logical format that made sense.
Now you have a rebuttal.
He's going to check with the fire chief.
Number, number five, really, we should not be, you know, regulating building permit process, that's a whole different process that, we control that with our release of covenants, okay? So either you release the covenant or you don't release the covenant.
Yeah.
Our reg shouldn't even get into this business here, uh, on that last paragraph.
So if we omit that, last paragraph?
We can't regulate, we cannot regulate the building.
So that needs to be omitted.
This whole paragraph?
And then, our process is our process.
Our process is surety, binder, pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah. What falls on any part of it?
Okay.
Should say RCP in first line. Is that a rerun? Did we do this already?
No, 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 page nineteen.
I think we did.
Did you reprint that?
I think that's a redo.
Oh, uh.
Okay, why are we using concrete on page twenty-eight?
It was already, we did that.
Driveways, all driveways extending from the completed road service to the lot line must have a topping of at least two inches of bituminous concrete. Would, that is asphalt.
It's not real concrete, guys.
Yeah, yeah, that's, uh, just a quick, that's why-
Bituminous concrete is asphalt.
I can say asphalt, that's why I say the word concrete. No, because I remember we were talking about the cul-de-sac and they were going to do the concrete.
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Curbing, and we're like, wait a second, can we make sure that's asphalt, not concrete?
No concrete.
Yes.
Okay, sidewalks, let's see.
Yeah, that was a sidewalk one.
Planning board discussion, five-foot sidewalks, I believe most rural sidewalks are smaller, Y-sides on both sides of proposed road.
So you already addressed that. Isn't it four? What did we propose for this last?
No, five is the standard.
Is it standard?
That's standard.
Okay.
Yeah.
Then leave it in both sides and that's just a waiver.
We're gonna, we're gonna- The trees?
Waiver.
No, no, I thought the trees was the thing we wanted to take out of here.
No, we're leaving it and keeping it on the waiver.
Per Ernie. Per Ernie.
He's the one that first wanted to get rid of the trees.
He's right, but, but leave it as a waiver, right?
Leave it as a waiver, but I would grant that waiver seven days a week.
Wait, say six.
We're leaving it in, okay, okay, well, you got to start it on, on cleaning this up to get the trees out, if you want to say.
Yeah, no, it's a negotiating tool, but I have no problem with it.
Okay.
Alright.
No trees here too, I think that's the same thing.
Less, oh, that's good. It all changed.
Yeah, that's the same thing.
Yeah.
Um, and then the last page, um, this is, uh, lingo or, uh, they, they want to take out town engineer or planning conservation agent, and, um, I don't object to that and just have planning agent in there.
Yeah.
Just a cleaner. Inconsistent, because it looks like you, you got like three people.
Individual designated by the planning board, and sometimes we have a peer person, right?
Yeah, and they'd be an agent.
Agent, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
That's how we want to clean up.
Agent designated by the planning board?
Correct.
Yeah, last page, all three sentences.
Which one?
Last sentence.
Well, that, that's kind of redundant in my opinion. I think if you say planning agent, that captures it.
Sure.
I mean, you, you have control over who's aside.
Definition of planning agent.
We could have town engineer.
Fake insulted or something like that.
What are we really changing here?
Just shortening. We can shorten, I could go grammatically and then go through and omit all the thos and the its and the thems.
Twenty-five.
Yes, we did.
Page thirty-five.
What's going on with the turning radius?
Not when I was there. Not when I was there.
The what?
Turning radius, why is it being questioned?
Oh, we're going to check back with the chief.
Cause of the dead-end street, when we were talking about the, um, highways and turning radiuses.
And the concern is that it's too much asphalt, kind of like too big?
Yeah.
Too big?
Four.
They could put an island in the middle, that would-
No, 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 I don't want that.
Do you, do you plow?
With trees.
You plow.
With trees! With trees! An island with trees!
You know he doesn't plow.
No, I don't plow. I just design.
No, we wanted, we wanted, um-
He's not turning around a ladder truck.
Yeah. That truck is, what, you want it smaller?
For, for a dead-end, we weren't, I wasn't sure what they had for the private ways. So we should be, if the private way, whatever it was, let's say sixty or something like that with a radius, we should be, just to verify what that needs to be. That's all. I wasn't sure if-
Right now it's a hundred feet.
Is, is a hundred what, what it is today?
Yeah, that's what I wanted to do.
Like, all the trucks, you'd realize this was done in seventy-five, so, you got newer trucks that-
You have a hundred-foot radius and you have a forty-footer. I'd say, I'd say a forty-footer.
Any radius you're talking about now? In a, in a cul-de-sac, is that what you're talking about?
Hundred foot, yeah.
It's going to, I mean-
Well, should be having more.
The fire chief has a number that he recommends.
That's what I'll talk to Ken. I'll see what he's comfortable with and then we'll use that.
That's alright. We're just trying to clarify.
Cause if it was the old style trucks that don't turn.
Yeah, right. You gotta have it make it up.
Make it up to safely maneuver.
Oh, a trailer truck that's not, what?
Safely maneuver, you know, a large vehicle.
Right. I mean, if a trailer truck makes a long turn and gets down into a cul-de-sac, he's going to be able to come back out again, you know?
Well, the thing is, you know and I know it, a track, a trailer can, will turn easier than a straight axle.
Oh, yeah.
So, you need to design for a straight axle, no, not no.
And I thought we had like a grid there.
Comes bouncing back and forth.
Drawing where they showed someone going in and trying to turn.
There's a standard for it. Next item on the agenda, we're moving right along here.
Like a crane, Mike? Like a crane?
Crane car.
Straight axle, forty-one, forty-seven, forty-five.
Drifting mobile special permit, one-year extension, JMT Sleepy Hollow, four thirty-nine northeast Main Street, thirty-four Davis Street, phase three. Did we, did we move on out already? I thought, I thought we did.
We did.
We did.
Oh, wait, which one are you talking about? Four, you did.
Yeah, that was last meeting, wasn't it?
I think it's just because it's in your to-be signed, I don't know why it's on.
It's in to be signed, probably, yeah, okay.
Next one? The decision, yeah?
Decision's in there, I just want you to take a look at the special conditions.
Yep.
Uh, make sure I didn't miss anything.
You call me a chairperson and not chairwoman?
JMT Sleepy Hollow.
Did I say that? I didn't touch that, actually. I don't want to be politically incorrect.
Alright, so we got that in there, we have to sign that at the end, alright.
And I get to be a person.
Alright, the next, one, two, three, four, five are accessory apartment extensions.
Yeah, I looked at all of them, they look really good.
And they are up to date on their taxes.
Yeah, if you don't mind a blanket approval.
I think if you've looked at it, I think we should go with that.
Do we have any questions about any of them?
Well, take a blanket approval.
And I will accept the motion.
Okay, I'll just list the addresses?
Yeah, that's all, that's fine, yeah.
I make a motion to grant the accessory apartment extensions for five oh three Northwest Main Street, one thirty-seven Martin Road, one forty-one Northwest Main Street, seven seven two Northwest Main Street, and one oh six Walnut Street.
Second. Okay, motion made by Tracy, seconded by Mike, Mike G. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain?
Motion carries.
Go bundling, right? Okay.
Saving, I can't.
Meeting minutes.
Oh. I looked at those and I couldn't find anything wrong.
Whoa!
Amazing.
Wow, she stumped it.
That's amazing.
Amazing.[1584.14]
Repress it?
So, should we do something or do people want to look at them? I, I didn't find it.
Oh, it's got eight fourteen and nine eleven, do we do eight fourteen on it?
We did eight fourteen last time.
They crossed it off, yeah.
Okay, so nine eleven. I, if, no, Mike, if you don't have anything, anybody else have anything on them?
Still going through the accessory.
A move we approve, the meeting minutes, as written, for September eleventh, twenty eighteen. Motion made by Mike G., seconded by Tracy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. All right. Nine agenda items, those zoning map amendments for Lakeside Residential, those are coming up.
Future?
Future date, BTL marijuana regulations, we're going to have to get started on that pretty quick, Bill, or?
I spoke with Matt about that and he said that, um, we should keep the existing bylaw in place and let it expire naturally. Then we can take it off the books.
When does it expire?
I want to say, uh, two thousand, it's the end of two thousand and eighteen, I thought.
We're almost there.
Yeah.
I mean, I know when I listened to the Selectment meeting, they were kind of trying to move things along so that you get it on.
Yes, expire it.
But I don't see that happening, so just let it expire.
Well, it's a general, yeah, they want to just let it expire and then after it's expired, we'll go and take it off the books.
They'll be working on the bylaw in the meantime, right, okay.
Then we have to add that to our zoning area, I was just going to.
I have a question on the first one, should we just zip it through?
It'll be just like.
Who's going to define the, uh. Lakeside Residential, if it becomes a new zone. That's CMR, DC is working on that also, right?
Well, they're working, that, that's kind of on the shelf right now until they submit a, a grant application to cover the cost of it. And then once that gets, if it gets approved, then they'll come up with a scope of work.
Because they're trying to keep that as a commute, multiple community type, regional.
All right, so we got solar regulations, drone regulations.
Drone regulations.
FCC, yeah.
I sent an email out.
We can't do nothing.
That, that had a press release from, uh, the FAA.
Yeah, they.
And they basically said, you know, look, in a nutshell, and I'm, this is verbatim, um, it, they basically said, um, drones, um, cannot be regulated locally. They take jurisdiction over drones, in a nutshell, that's what the press release said.
Do they have, can you get, is there a list of what their bylaws are and stuff, is, are their laws are as fine as flying them close to people's houses or?
Right, there seems to be nothing to back this up, you know, other than when I was doing a lot of reading on all recent articles that have been in newspapers and some of them have been, the one in Newton was overturned by judge. I mean, I, I do agree that it's, they're being overturned, these local jurisdictions.
Right.
I, I think I.
What is the FAA jurisdiction, you're asking?
Well, so, I, I read through this and then I've been, this is a very personal thing here, I mean, I think it's personal forensic, you know. Other than, um, what I call for fire, rescue, you know, everything like that is terrific, you know, but the fact is, so there's a distinction in the reading. I do agree that the FAA came out this press release and they, um, also have some, um, tribal in ten states, they're doing some research on how local authorities can get involved in this and input and how it affects the people. So you read that, right? So, but, but there is also other things I read where, you know, line of sight has to be kept, um, and a big distinction between people who register with the FAA and hobbyists. Hobbyist is a big distinction, they, basically, seems to be that there's hands-off. If, if somebody doesn't register with the FAA, the FAA has no jurisdiction over them. So how do we handle all the hobbyists who, and I, and I wrote down here, um, you know, voyeurers filming children for profit, looking at your backyard and casing out what you have back there, you collect a car behind your house, your pool, your property. This is stuff that's actually core to our, you know, rights, whether it be, uh, property rights or if it's, uh, what's the other thing, one of the civil liberties?
Yeah.
You know, things like that. This is, I, I think we, I mean, I personally want to make a stand on this, on the ones that, there's, there's ones where if you're a photographer and you have a company, there's ones, you know, and they will all get permission.
Right.
You know, that's the way they work, you know, fire, police, they, they have to do what they have to do because we want them to do that.
Right, emergency situation.
But for, for somebody who's just flying around your backyard, looking at your pool, your children are out there, they have cameras now. I mean, it's amazing what these things are, they're well beyond what anybody ever anticipated. And I think that we, we, I'd like to get from the lawyers, our attorneys, some sort of, and I'm not one to try to get them spending money on getting the attorneys to make it, but somebody needs to tell us where the FAA ends and where these hobbyists begin and where our authority is over our jurisdiction, our properties, our privacy. There has to be.
Get the FAA regs, go from there.
Right, but let's put that, let the attorneys deal with that, we're not lawyers, and so.
Well, if the regs state a certain statement, then that's.
I don't know that there is regs that have punitive, um, circumstances for anything, but there is a distinction between hobbyists and people that register.
Commercial use and for recreational use, there are different FAA drone regulations.
Correct.
Business Insider.
But there are regulations for either.
Yeah, July twenty-fifth, two thousand seventeen.
Yeah, we don't have it, right. But if you have it now, then.
If I had, if I had Wi-Fi, then I would already be able to read.
Right.
What it is, but I have Sprint.
But I think we still need, we.
Can you hear me now?
I do hear you, yeah. But I think we owe it, as the planning board, to the people that vote us in, to protect their rights in this town. And I am telling you, I have a real problem with drones flying over our properties, whether it be our houses or our businesses, they're not allowed to do that. And, and I know the FAA is moving really slow on this and that's why they're doing these tests with ten states or whatever, tribal and, but it's, it's not good enough right now and we'll have to find out, a little recs.
Yeah, I'm talking, I got stuff coming around, sign.
So.
Line of sight rule, which mandates that drone operators.
I read that.
The unmanned aircraft within eye shot at all times.
So then it becomes an enforcement question.
Right, because you know that.
But that's their, their responsibility, it's not the local.
But they're not going to. Yeah, but it doesn't matter, so where, where is it that, on the grassroots, that we're not set up for combative situations? Because the FAA is just a government thing that's not here, it's not local. So, I just don't think we can, I don't think we should just say, oh, it's FAA, it's all set, let's move on, it's not like that, we have a responsibility.
But if you're, if there's no enforcement mechanism, there's nothing that can be done about it.
So I want our lawyers, this town's lawyers, to say.
You can't overrule the FAA.
No, but I want their interpretation.
In addition to federal laws, several states have enacted drone regulations of their own. Here's the breakdown of drone regulations by state.
Can you share that with, so we have it?
What do you want to share?
You got to sign those, Aaron.
I need Wi-Fi. Massachusetts has none, a lot of, um, the states forbid the use of drones to interfere with hunters.
Tap two.
Spying on another person inside of a building, Mississippi, forbids the use of drones for that. Um.
Oh, right.
And then places restrictions on drone use.
That's about true, you can sign that.
For illegal hunting, fishing, trafficking.
The, uh, thing is, who and what is the enforcement officer for that?
Right, we can't just call up the government and say, hey, my neighbor is.
Why would they give you a police?
Well, Massachusetts is the reg, yeah, it's under.
But you just said that there isn't.
Massachusetts needs to adopt.
Right, so why can't we be the folks that believe in this and start to move something to the, the state?
Then you need to, yeah.
Go to the State House. We have representatives, we can do this.
You draft it up.
Did you sign this?
Just copy another state's.
Yeah, but that's why.
No, I'm serious, just copy another state's.
Well, that's, that's how it gets done, though, Aaron.
And then it seems like a lot of towns are very concerned about this.
Start, start by looking at another state's regulations and, or bills that get passed and then give it to our legislatures and see if they'll carry it forward.
Right, that's how that works. All right, so we need to review all of the state ones.
Right, that's what you just had.
Well, there's not a lot, there's not a lot of people.
I mean, Newton, Newton had adopted, Newton had adopted a regulation, it was clear, it was concise.
But it got thrown out.
It got thrown out because it went to a federal judge.
Because the federal judge said the state can't overrule the federal government.
But there is home rule, you know, I'm not, I'm not a politician.
The difference is, you're talking about a town, that's local.
Right, if the state adopts.
The state is different.
The state adopts.
This is more from wildlife.
I'll tell you.
And this article is not intended to provide legal advice. But it seems, um, it says also, uh, Texas, what you're saying about predators.
Yep.
Set rules for drone use, um, requires that professionals obtain written consent without permission and rules must be unconscionable.
And that's, the state has adopted that.
Texas. I just texted you that.
Well, I don't want them to be the lone state, we should also do that.